Educate, inspire, and support all students. Amy over role. Please all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Statement of commitment. Secretary, take that all.
Policy one point five. The board is impartial in the development of procedures and policies and in exercising judicial functions.
Thank you. Public participation process. Members of the audience are welcome to make comments at the designated time on the agenda. Please register on the sign up sheet and limit your comments to three minutes when your name is called. Out of respect for all individuals, please refrain from personal criticism in an open forum. Policy one sixty seven point three. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Anna, support by Tanya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion pass. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Motion by Pam, support by Anna. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion pass. Alright, educational highlights. We have a handful of all state athletes from spring sports. See who's on top. Sumner Mekov. Yeah. Have a good weekend of golf this weekend?
Yeah.
Stay up there, we'll do Seton's too.
More.
Do you have Seton's there too? We could do his at the same time and then get a group picture. Nope?
And Satan Schuderoff.
Way to go Joey.
Oh yeah, no more roll. Come on, jump in. Get a me call.
Let's get the rookie coach in there too. Come on, coach. Come on, you're here, get up in there. What Coach Mango doesn't know is that he led the team to its first regional golf title in history, so he only set the bar as high, you know. He got that bar up there now. You're good guys, thank you.
Alright, and then we have our track athletes. We had four by eight hundred first place relay team. Our son, Jackson Myers. And Mason Hill. And Kelly Whalen. Kelly also was all state in the two mile. And Ronnie Sovera. Ronnie is also for the mile. Alright, there's a long end here, one more.
Yellow team.
It's Coach Meyer, I see Coach Meyer.
Meyer here.
Oh, alright, squeeze in guys, squeeze in. Just like you're passing the baton. Get a little closer. And I believe it was a school record time, correct? Awesome, and what's your next step with this team? Nationals, that's right, you're going, boy. That's awesome.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Hello everyone.
Start the timer, start the timer.
So, it's long, so yeah, you better. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the golf team. And because when I was in your shoes, I didn't get all the details. So you give away these things. I thought maybe a little context to what you guys are doing or how you're supporting us. So we had nineteen total kids on the team. We had ten seniors. The optimal number is fourteen. We decided not to cut, leave the seniors. It's my first year, have some buy in from those guys. So those guys are really good for me. As you know, we had really bad weather to start the season. But we talked, we played through the rain and the cold and we talked to a lot of the kids about being tough. And being tough doesn't mean you take a punch or you can take pain. It's about mental toughness and working through a process that isn't easy for anyone. So I was pretty tough on them through those times. So it's mental and physical. So in our conference, then we started in the conference. We finished top three consistently in the conference. And then we hit a day where it was like forty mile an hour winds. We had a two day match. And the matches worked like this. All teams go to one golf course and we play all of our conference in the RCA. Okay, so we went to Western Greens, picked up, and then we went to Pigeon Creeks. We played eighteen holes, forty mile an hour winds all day. Well, we punished the field. And we didn't even play all that great. They just played worse. So that was our kicking point of the toughness speech and being tough and working through those things. So that vaulted us into first place. Then Sumner Mekov joined the team, who was out for a long time with a back injury. So we won both of those conferences, conference meets. We beat the likes of Grand Haven, Hudsonville, West Ottawa. We're beating powerhouse schools. As we're going to my one minute yet.
No, you're good.
Okay. So anyways, we go on to win the conference. First champion ever in the RCA Boys Conference. And we then went to the regional. We were expected to be in that fifth to third range. We had a chance.
Now you're at one minute.
We wound up, thank you. We wound up winning the regional and surprised everyone, even ourselves. Went on to state and we took ninth place at state. State was a Friday, Saturday tournament, thirty six holes. Again, beating teams we shouldn't be beating, but we were just tougher. We were just mentally ready to go. I want to thank some people that are here. We got late notice, our JV coach quit. So Dave Wiersma, thank you, stepped in. Jason Dykstra took all my phone calls and he really supported me. And I want to thank the administration here for supporting me and the athletes. I'll finish with this. It's not just about the athletes. We had talent, we also have smarts. I asked everybody to leave here, they don't know it yet, but they're academic all state team and we also have an individual all state. So not only are they athletes, they're good in the classroom too. So that's it on the golf team. Thanks for your time.
Good job, Coach.
Good evening. I got quite a bit to get through, so hopefully I'll get through it all. I'd like to first off by congratulating the golf team, the track guys. Wonderful to see the updates on Facebook all the time and follow their progress and congratulations to them. Made it through another school year. Lots of big feels at my house. I'm sure at the other houses, there was some big feels last week too. I just wanted to express my personal gratitude and thanks to all of the staff, teachers, aides, support staff, top to bottom. Another fantastic year and thank you for all of your hard work. Personally, I was privileged to be a part of the SLT team at the ECC building the past three years and I have graduated out this year with my youngest moving up to first grade. So I own my own graduation this year. I was personally blessed being part of the ECC and the SLT. I just love that building. I have a passion for those kids in that building and those staff. And I wanted to just share some cool highlights from this year's SLT recap, data recap. Ninety percent of all the students in ECC reported that they knew PBIS expectations and had received positive accolades within the past two weeks. Our teachers love on our kids. Ninety-seven percent of all families at the ECC have reported they know how to access help and get that help. A hundred percent of the staff at ECC have reported that they feel supported in their roles day to day. Ninety-six percent of all kindergarten students scored at or above I Ready reading levels this year. Ninety-three percent of kindergarteners scored at or above I Ready math levels for this year. Those two have been on a continuous increase for the last four years. That speaks to our staff, that speaks to the support, that speaks to ourselves as a district, top to bottom. Can't be done without the help of the staff and support from all over. So thank you. I'd also like to highlight that we have six elementary student artworks at DeVos yet through this week for the West Michigan Art Show. If you get a chance, go check it out. And then really quickly, I want to circle back to the budget, specifically the food excess budget, four hundred thousand dollars. I planted this with the board last year. I would really, really, really love for the board to take a look at and consider something like a meetup, eat up type situation for a summer food program with that money. I just recently found out that West Ottawa is doing that where they make sack lunches, they have a box truck, a small one, and they go throughout the neighborhood every week throughout the summer and they deliver food to district families in need that are underserviced. Food scarcity doesn't stop when school stops. It is proven statistically that food and nutrition directly impacts how our students learn and how our students grow educationally. I know that's a large task to ask the board to undertake and to look into, but I think it's worth taking a look at using that large of a sum of money to see how we can continue to impact our students' growth educationally throughout the summer. Thank you.
That's all on the list. That is all on the list. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment at this time? And we will go on to committee reports. CM. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Yep, thank you. Just a reminder, on June twenty-third, we'll have our work session for this month and Ms. Voss will be presenting the data. Mr. Lamping just gave you a preview of what you'll hear on the twenty-third, but we'll have some of that year in data. Just know that there are some scores like M-Step and PSAT that might still be embargoed and so we can't share that, but we will be able to share the I Ready data, which is the benchmark data we use throughout the year. So that'll come on the twenty-third if you can be there. And then of course, our one meeting in July is on July fourteenth. So hopefully you can postpone any camping trips for that particular day. I did want to talk a little bit about the idea of a bond. And again, I'm about as bond shy as anybody else right now. I think I've had a lot of bond in my belly and I don't know if I want anymore. But I do, I have been getting a lot of feedback. And one of the things I hear is, okay, we understand that the community would not support some of the things that they felt were non-essential. Some people didn't, like the fieldhouse, the robotics, whatever, some of those other elements, what they are. There is a way to do an intensive survey. It's, there's a couple of companies out there. The one that I've used in the past is Epic MRA. It's one that a lot of schools use. They will make phone calls and they can ask very targeted, specific questions and that they can really get at. They have a really high reliability rate and they're really good at telling you your community will support this, they won't support that. They might feel comfortable with a bond proposal of this amount, not this amount. I feel like it is expensive. It's probably somewhere between sixteen and twenty thousand dollars to do that. I will say that we have invested already in our bond proposals between the two election cycles for legal fees, for township fees, for architectural and the facilities assessment we did and some signs that we made and flyers that we made. We've spent about thirty-one thousand five hundred so far total on the two bond efforts. We knew that there'd be a cost. There's always a cost if you're going to go for a bond. So again, I'm suggesting that there may be additional costs if we want to try this. I'd like to hear from the board. I feel like we still have quite a few very essential capital projects that we'd like to get to, an expansion of the ECC, the updating of the high school. But Epic MRA or some company similar to them can give us a pretty good idea if the community is interested at all in something closer to, say, I'm just throwing numbers out, like a forty million or fifty million. And again, those are the things that this type of survey can do is they'll tell you, based on their data, what that threshold might be for our community. I think it makes sense to do that. We'd look at going out next year. Could be May, could be August, could be November. If it's going to be May, then we really need to start doing like the surveying over the summer because when we come back in the fall, like in August or September, we want to reconstitute a new steering committee to use the data from the survey and then think about, okay, if the survey is favorable, obviously if it's not favorable, we're not even going to try. But the data, the data's favorable, but it suggests this amount. Here's our facilities assessment, here's costs associated. And let that steering committee kind of decide then, based on that information from the community, what should be in the final proposal. My biggest concern is these issues we have aren't going to go away. We can't address them all. And the longer we wait to get after them, the more they're going to cost to do. I mean, a year from now is already going to probably be ten percent higher for every project than it would have been had we done it this year. So I really think that ultimately it makes sense to at least have the conversation, but I don't think we should go into this again without doing, you know, we tried to survey the community, but what we found was even though we got a few survey responses from community members, it was ninety-five percent parents again. And I feel like the community, we need to find out from them. And this company, these companies have the way, the personnel, the people who can access the community. So I think if we're going to try another bond proposal, I think it makes sense to spend the money and find out if there's really an appetite for it or if there's no appetite for it. And if there is, you know, how big a chunk do they want us to try to bite off? So I'd like to get some feedback from the board tonight. Any thoughts you might have about me before I start calling Epic and some other companies to even get quotes on it. But they're all, I can tell you, they're all going to be about fifteen thousand, maybe twenty thousand at the top to do the surveys.
How do they access the community? What's their way, like email, phone calls?
I think they do primarily phone calls. And we were talking about that because, you know, I screen all my calls. But they, they are, they still have a very high success rate and they said that a lot of times they, well, this is just Epic, so I don't know about all of them. I, again, that's the only one I'm familiar with. They'll leave voicemails and you'd be surprised. People, I mean, people in this community want to give their opinion, right? If they, if they think the school's going to go out for a bond, I want you to know what I feel, could be good or bad. And so they've had a pretty high success if they leave the name and number and say, hey, this is on behalf of Allen Dell Public Schools. We really want community input. So they get those, it's almost always person to person.
Is it an automated message or like?
Nope, it's person.
Are you actually talking to somebody?
It's an actual person. Yep. And I think, again, that's why their data is more reliable, but it's also why getting their data is more expensive because they got to pay the people to do it.
Is this something where, obviously, I think we found in the last bond that Facebook was a huge contributor to, to the narrative? Is there a place where they're going to say, hey, if you want to put, if you want, almost like a survey, like, hey, can you call this number, you can have input? Do they, do they dig into it that way or is it just cold calling people?
I don't know. I'm writing this down. I don't know. Last time I did a bond with a district and we used Epic, I don't even know if social media even existed. So it's a brand new world, Mr. Holsteg. And so I will ask if they use social media at all to try to. I know that we did when we put out our survey and it didn't really help us any get more community members, but it's certainly an avenue to explore. Again, we saw a lot, when you talk about social media, one of the things that we saw, even for folks who didn't support the bond, over and over and over again, if this was just for educational pieces, I would have supported it if it was just education. Well, if that's true, then the survey should find that out. The survey should find out that those people who said, I would support this if it were less. I would support it if it was just education. The survey should tell us that. And so that's what I would hope we'd find out. Because again, I don't want to go through this again. Yes, we'd be paying for the survey, but I don't want to pay all the legal fees and whatever. If the community, if the survey says it does, there's no support for it, then we just have to shelve that idea, but.
In the past, have we brought any third party consultants in to help us with a needs-based analysis for the district? What do we actually need?
That's what, well, I'm not sure what you mean. So needs-based, so we did, yes, we brought a third party in to come in and do a facilities assessment. They walked through every one of our buildings, top to bottom, looked at, you know, that's how we know the condition of our roofs and our condition of our, and that's not how we know. Mr. Tornell's very well versed in the condition of the buildings, but they affirmed that, hey, this pavement's bad. It's hard on your buses, so there's the negative impact of that. So yes, we did have a third party come in and do top to bottom facilities assessment. I actually have a company coming in, I think in July, to do an energy consultation with us just to see, could we be more energy efficient? It's going to be hard when I talk to the person, they're like, well, you know, there's geothermal. And I'm like, well, you know, we have it in every building already. Oh, okay. And so there are a lot of things that we currently have already, but still, we're going to continue to do those types of things. You know, see if there's, you know, energy rebates if we install this. Could we get an energy rebate? So we do bring third parties in on that.
Okay. Yeah, because I think pretty clearly the community would support repaving the parking lots, but that's, you know, at a cost of a million dollars or whatever it is.
Yeah.
If we need a new air conditioning system, climate control, roofs. You know, I don't think we're going to have any issue getting support from the community with those things. But, you know, with like the ECC, I've heard a lot about, hey, we have an absolute need for this. This is something every person that I've talked to can support. You know, based on, you know, and what our needs are. Now, you know, one of the things for me would be, you know, based on what our tuition schedule is with our preschool and what our enrollment is with some of the elementary and kids that are coming up. If we had a consultant come in and say, okay, here's what you need, project our growth into the future, now we can present that kind of information to the community. I think it's going to go a long way.
Yeah, and again, we did that too. We used a company called Stanfred. Stanfred did the enrollment projection and so that, that was all a part of it. Now that, you bring up a point. I mean, if, if this board feels strongly enough that a scaled down version, and you can tell me what that would look like if it's thirty million, fifty million, just, you know, like you said, just take the pieces that you feel the community would support, then we don't need to spend sixteen thousand dollars on an Epic MRI survey. If the board feels like you're in tune enough with the community.
And I just, you know, I want to reframe that a little bit. Rather than what the community is willing to spend, what are the actual district's needs? And then build that out. So it may be, hey, we need five million dollars. Or it might be, wow, we really need eighty million dollars if we want student success. But take it, sort of approach it from that perspective, package it, and then hand it to the community is what I would like to see. I, you know, I changed, I changed an investment in a 401K and I got like bombarded with prospectus information and annual reports and all this stuff. And here, we asked the community to, you know, consider an eighty-eight million dollar investment. And, you know, like for me, I got a postcard and the opportunity to come to the meetings, access to Scott. But it, it just would have been, it would have been better, I think, to build more of that into a presentation and circulate that, the, the social media stuff. I read a lot of posts. I didn't read a lot of posts because I don't really do social media. My wife read a lot of posts and shared those with me. And, you know, there were things, I think, that answers could have been provided in, you know, print format that would have either given, you know, one community member an opportunity to, you know, to share their perspective or we wouldn't have even seen the question because it was right there. You know, I think, I think there's an opportunity for us to do that and I think it positions us better with the community to say, hey, here's what our need is. We're coming to you not with, you know, the maximum amount we can borrow is this and advertise it to you as we're not going to increase the tax rate over the previous year's levy. Like that, I think that rubbed people the wrong way. I didn't like seeing it presented that way myself. Man, I think a third party coming in would give us, I mean, it, it, it just brings, I think, a bit of credibility to it to say, not only are we, we and a steering committee saying this is what we want slash need, but this is a third party consultant, this is what they do and they're telling us for our, for the best outcomes for our students, here's where we should invest and we want your support and partnership. I think that's, that's an easier conversation than the one that we've had the last two times. I really do.
But it would not have increased, right?
No, it wouldn't have increased. I guess.
Part of my problem with the negative campaign is that there was so much disinformation and if, just as an example, if you're still believing that there was going to be an increase, how many other people think that? Because we made it pretty clear that there wasn't. And I mean, time after time, we approached that and explained it and we had meetings and we had, you know, all kinds of things. And still, between the Facebook and the negative campaign that was run by I don't know who, that information was not valid.
Right, so it's not dishonest, I would say, to say it's not going to increase over the previous year's levy. But it's, to me, that's not very forthcoming. It's not very, you know, transparent.
I'm not sure what else we could say though.
Well, let's look at, look at that, that investment. If we were going to do that, the way I understood it, we would have had to borrow from the state loan.
School loan, school loan revolving fund, yep.
Right, so we just got to a point with our two thousand fifteen bond where we're making principal and interest payments. We would have been in the same situation. We're going to borrow eighty-eight million dollars today, but we don't have the revenue to offset the additional interest cost. So we're borrowing from the state to pay the interest until we can collect the revenue, which is twenty thirty-four. And then we can start doing principles and interest. Still not dishonest to say that we're not going to raise the mileage rate over the previous year's levy. But it doesn't paint the full picture. It's not prospectus transparent where it's like, here's exactly what this is.
We did pay off the principal though. We were paying off the principal.
How could we if we're, we're just starting to make principal? I'll, I'll bring this up.
It's like, again, it's like your thirty-year mortgage.
And understand it better.
When you, when you're paying on your house, you make a monthly payment, part of that goes to principal.
Right.
But there's also interest costs. And so we have been making some principal and interest costs, but we're just reaching the point where now we got beyond the principal or the interest costs. So we did pay it, otherwise it wouldn't be going down. Otherwise, there'd be no end to it, it'd still be going up.
Right.
So we did pay it down, but I understand what you're saying. The thing I am a little confused about, and again, just for sake of conversation, is we had, we keep saying third party. We had a third party. I, I don't know what else we would do differently next time than we did this time. We had multiple third parties come in and to do the analysis and to do the, so we, we. We had multiple third-parties come in and, and to do the analysis and to, to the, so, we, we had the people do the things I think you're saying. It wasn't just Gary and I saying, hey, here's what we need. We had a third-party analysis done.
I think maybe then the opportunity is to socialize that a little bit better.
Yeah.
And say, this is the third-party, this is what they came up with, and, you know, and I just think that's a better foundation to start from, and I didn't see that with the last two bond offerings.
You need your microphone?
No, no, you're fine.
I think what he's saying is have that third-party. Instead of you doing the meeting, have that third-party present it and say, this is what we determined.
But Triangle was the construction company that did the third-party analysis. They were the third-party and they were at the meetings. That's who you would hire. You would hire someone who does, you would hire a contractor to do that analysis, and we happened to hire Triangle to do that analysis. So, they were there.
But they were also the construction manager.
Right, but that would be the same case. I mean, I don't...
Well, if the bond passed, we still would have to go back.
Yeah, they wouldn't necessarily have been the construction manager.
Okay.
So, I, it, what, well, some, it's gonna, it's a little uncomfortable to say, but what I, what I feel like the underlying tone is that there's just a lot of distrust in terms of where the information is coming from, whether it's meant to be that way, whether it is, it was honest, and it doesn't feel like it to people, so it's their perception. So, I guess that leads me back to, maybe the survey is not a bad idea, which I didn't initially think that, because it just feels really bad to think about the amount of money we've spent already, looking at, you know, coming from our budget hearing and kind of hearing where we're at to spend another chunk of money. I don't, that doesn't necessarily sit well with me, but also, I think it's really tough to have some of these conversations sometimes with people, because they interpret how they think you feel and they kind of talk to you about what you wanna hear, um, but that doesn't necessarily reflect, maybe, how they're going in voting versus talking to a third-party. Maybe we actually will get, you know, how they really feel, because it's, you know, the people that I would know and talk to, man, they're all for the athletic fieldhouse, right? But I coach, and I do things, so I'm talking to other athletes, so of course, they want that. Um, and so I think maybe it's a little skewed that way for us to make that determination of how the community feels, unless we're really gonna get out there and talk to people that we don't typically, you know, have those types of conversations with. So, I guess I would be interested in hearing that, so that we're getting data, you know, directly from them. There's not really a reason for people to talk to someone they don't know on the phone and tell them something that they wouldn't believe is true.
I mean, the other thing I could do, I mean, it's, I, I, there's, I, there's, there's some urgency, but there's not a ton of urgency. Um, if you would want me to, again, Gary and I can look at the information that came from the facilities assessment and what was in the last bond proposal, and we could put together that, I think, kind of, Brandon, what you're talking about, one of those things that there seems to be essential support for, and in July, I could bring that to the board. 'Cause I don't know what it is either. I mean, I, I haven't sat down to say, gosh, if we just did this, it's forty million. If we just did this, it's fifty million. You know, Gary and I could do that in the next couple of weeks, and in July, bring that back to the board meeting, and then at that time, you can let me know we wanna do the survey, or we feel comfortable that the community would, you know what I mean? Does that make any sense to do it that way, or?
Yeah, absolutely. I think then the, the third-party who's reaching out to the community has something, like, you know, and they, that, that's the exact conversation that they can have, so we may not get a lot of participation here in the room, but if we're willing to invest and reach out and say things like, the, you know, but we have a need for X number, millions of dollars for, to make sure bus drop-off and pickup is safe and goes more smoothly, to re, resurface our parking lots. Um, you know, any of those, the cafeteria. The cafeteria has to, I mean, that just has to happen. And, you know, those types of things where we say, this is what we need, you know, for us to continue to function, so we don't watch our capital fund deplete and our general fund deplete, um, to a point where we can't provide a successful environment for the, for the kids. And then, you know, for an additional this, here's what it allows us to do for, you know, the, the preschool or elementary kids or whatever it is, and then this, and then this, and then this, and then get to the, you know, some of the bigger ticket items that maybe are, you know, have less support. And with that third-party asking the question, now, you know, people can answer without, you know, bias or, you know, without being concerned about hurting someone's feelings. Even conversations I've had about the bonds, it's like, or with the bond, it's like, I don't really support this, but, you know, I don't really wanna, you know, dig into that, but, you know, the decision was made before I came onto the board to put this back on the May 6 ballot, so, you know.
We can, um, we can take, we might be able to get it done before the June work session. If, if we can, if we, 'cause we've got the information we need, really. So, if I can, then I'll present it at the June work session, and if you decide you want to use Epic MRI, then we could put it on the July agenda for board approval to go ahead with that. So, I will try really hard to put it together based on, you know, what we had the first time. These are the things that we think are the key, key projects, and, and again, then the board can say, maybe we'll come in and say, well, we got sixty million dollars, and the board might say, we don't want sixty million dollars. Does that feel comfortable to the board?
Yeah, I mean, if we could take that data, visualize it, circulate it, you know, collaborate around it, I think we're, it's a big win for us, for the community to rebuild, because I think there is, uh, a loss of trust here over the past two election cycles in putting this, this bond on. Um, I think, you know, not only getting what we need for the students, but also just helping to, to really build that relationship back with the community is gonna be helpful, and I think th, this is a good approach for us to do that. And it will evolve and mature as we work through it, but I think it, yeah, that'd be a great place to start, and June would be a good time to start looking at those things.
I'll try really hard to get that done. For Ju, for June. Well, and again, 'cause I wanna put it in, be able to present it in a way that you can work through. That's the really hard part, so. Hopefully, I can get that done for the June work session. If not, we'll push it to July, so we have good information to talk about. Okay, and then for my other, uh, she is still here, uh, we made a really important hire, and we're very excited about this hire, and since she's here, I'm gonna ask her to stand up. Our new transportation director is Ms. Lori Dyke. She is joining our... Uh, Lori has been with the district, I believe, twenty-five years. She just got her twenty-five-year service pin, so that was very exciting. So, uh, Lori is joining our team, and we are all very excited to have her on board. On the bus, we're, we're excited to have you on the bus. Uh, and that's all I had for comments.
Nothing.
Generally or specifically?
Uh, first of all, um, yeah, can I get a chance, graduation, um, the, thank Cooper Administration, our teachers, um, for helping our, our senior class, you know, three, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years of, of schooling and for that, that achievement, that, that's a, that's a big part in every kid's life, in person, right? So, thank you, school employees in general, for, for all that hard work, and for another great year. And, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of stuff on the agenda, supporting those, those groups, and it's, it's, not without them that we can teach our kids. We gotta have them all, so, thank you to all of them. And through spring athletics, I think we, we grew them, and we, we've got great athletes, great coaches in our community. It's, uh, it takes a lot of time to be a coach, but a lot, and, uh, thank you all, so, and that's all I have.
I make a motion to approve the tentative agreement between APS and the secretarial group as presented.
Yep, um, we love our secretaries. We're very blessed. We've got secretaries who are in their first year. We've got secretaries who've been in their tenth year-plus, and, um, we just appreciate all of them very much. We, uh, worked through an agreement with them that they seem very happy with, and so we ask that you support that agreement.
Any questions or discussion?
Deon?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteg? Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for approval of the tentative transportation group?
I make a motion to approve the tentative transportation agreement between APS and the bus drivers as presented.
Support.
Yeah, this was, um, you know, a great deal, I think, for both us and the drivers. It was kind of a heavy lift, as I'd mentioned to you in one of my updates. We were, before, we had an hourly rate and a mileage rate, and it got really confusing, and we had heard that maybe it was kind of hard to recruit drivers, 'cause they didn't know exactly how much they would make, and so Mr. Vanderlawn did a tremendous amount of work looking at what it would take to turn that into just an hourly rate, um, going back and doing three-year averages for every employee and the whole bit. So, he did a great job, um, coming to that agreement, and, uh, we're just thankful for our bus drivers, and I think we have an agreement that's gonna serve us well for the next three years.
Questions or discussion?
One of the things that I noticed, one of the things that I noticed in our packet for truth and taxation, there, it looked like there was a pretty significant reduction in the, uh, retirement funding for the transportation group. Is that, was that part of the contract, or am I, did I see something wrongly?
I don't know what that would be, unless it's the retirement rate in general that went down, Scott? Do you have any idea what that would be related to?
Sorry, page forty-nine.
Yeah, I can answer it right now.
I think it's worth looking into.
It's nothing that was negotiated, I can tell you that. In fact, we, I think we increased the buyout of sick days, and so, um, when, when an employee retires, so if anything, I would think that there'd be a little bit more retirement cost.
Like, as I read through it, I mean, the language looked good, um, but that, that caught my attention, so, I think, uh...
Yeah, we'll look into it. My guess is it probably has something to do with the state changed the retirement formula.
Right, it's the unfunded portion of the retirement, so, it's worth digging into, I think. But just to clarify, that wasn't in the contract that you were reading? No, there was nothing about retirement. Yeah. And it should be.
Yep, so we'll look into that, but again, it does, I don't think it has an impact on the contract. We didn't change anything about their retirement formula or any of their retirement benefits.
They don't build that into the contract?
Not, not all of that, no.
This is, there's two lines, okay? There's the retirement, that covers the whole district, and, and then there's this retirement unfunded piece, that's the unfunded liability that the, the whole state has and the district has. That piece, we give revenue and we get expense and we match, okay? So, the state gives us money, but then we have to expense it.
Okay.
So, that has, has nothing to do with any of the contracts, that piece of the retirement. It's just paying off the unfunded liability, which is hundreds of millions of dollars state-run.
Okay.
And then, that's, that's the work that went down with it.
Yeah, all right. And this, so this is the agreement you've worked on with the transportation director?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll reach out to you, Scott, learn a little bit more about that.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteg? Tenbrink?
Yep.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tentative agreement between APS and the ASPA as presented.
Support.
Yep, so the ASPA is the Allendale Support Personnel Association. This is basically our aides, so our general ed aides, our special ed aides, uh, library aides, uh, covers all of them. Uh, they are represented by the Michigan Education Association, so this is the actual only union agreement that you are approving tonight. And, um, again, we had a very good negotiation, and we feel like, um, we've negotiated a competitive wage for the area, um, comparison to other school districts in the area, and, uh, like, we've got agreement from the AIDS Association, and we hope we get your support as well.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteg?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion pass.
I make a motion to approve the tentative agreement between APS and the food service group as presented.
Support.
So, this negotiation primarily takes place between Troy and I and Jody Brower, who's the head of the food service group, and, um, again, because the food service fund balance is in a really good spot, and because we like to keep our people as long as we can, we were able to give a really nice raise to our employees in that group, particularly to our leads, because the leads are critical to the success of the kitchen, and so that's where we had a nice increase there. Um, but again, we think this is a really competitive agreement and should also serve us well for the next three years.
Holsteg?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Motion pass. Can I get a motion to support the approval of the 2025-26 MHSAA membership?
Make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 MHSAA membership resolution as presented.
Support.
Motion by Brandon, support by Anna. Dr. Cooper.
Yep, uh, this is, uh, our annual renewal of the membership with the MHSAA, which allows our student athletes to compete in the, um, competitions, the state competitions, districts, regionals, finals, and, uh, given the performance of our kids this year, we definitely wanna be involved. So, I would ask you to please support this resolution.
Participate and win.
That's right, that's right.
I like that. Any other questions or comment? Amy?
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteg?
Yes.
Motion pass. Can I have a motion to approve the general appropriations resolution?
Motion to approve the general appropriation resolution to amend the 24-25 pledges.
Motion by Pam. So, Pam, support by Anna. Dr. Cooper.
Yep, uh, Mr. Park made a fabulous presentation, a powerful slideshow, you know, managed by myself, and, uh, presented the information. Um, again, we're very pleased that we were able to maintain our fund balance, uh, make all of our payments. We, you know, purchased that property this year and, um, still are in a pretty good financial standing, and so we would ask that you approve the budget that we just finished, 24-25.
Thank you. Any questions or comment? Thank you. Any questions or comment? Amy, have our vote, please.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion to approve the 2025-2026 general appropriation resolution for the budget?
Make a motion to approve the general appropriation resolution for the 2025-2026 budgets as presented.
Support.
Motion by Brandon, support by Anna.
Yeah, again, Scott made a wonderful presentation on this, and we fully acknowledge that this is just a shot in the dark. We don't know what our funding's going to be. We don't know how many kids are going to show up. We're doing our best guess based on what we hear in terms of funding and historical data on enrollment. Again, we're hopeful that things will be even better than we're projecting, but the good news is that it looks like we can, you know, if everything stays the same with funding and, and enrollment, we should have another good year next year, so we hope you'll support our first attempt at the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Any questions? Amy, have our vote, please.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I have a motion to approve the tax levy resolution for the 2026 ta-, 2025 tax levy?
Motion to approve the tax levy resolution for the 2025 tax levy and to approve the L-4029 tax rate plus. Support.
Support by, motion by Pam, support by Tanya.
Uh, yep, we know that our past bond elections have required us to collect twelve mills to pay those back. What you're being asked to do here is support a resolution that directs the township to collect those mills on our behalf.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Any questions or discussion?
Appreciate you resolving the, the questions that I had earlier.
No, those are good questions. I learned from them, so thank you for asking.
Amy.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I have a motion to approve the PE waiver option for marching band?
Motion to approve the PE waiver option for marching band students as presented.
Support.
Motion by Pam, support by Brandon. Dr. Cooper.
Yep, again, I just want to be very clear that no one in administration suggests that the rigor of marching band is the same as taking a PE course. We just want to be able to offer our parents the option that the state allows. The state allows for a waiver of that one semester of PE if a student is in marching band, and so we would like the board to allow that option for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Any questions or comment?
For me personally, I don't feel that these students will be gaining the knowledge that they would get in phys ed if they were to waive this class option off, so because of that, my vote will be no tonight.
Thank you.
As a person that's done marching band, I'm going to say, between the mental and the physical, I was very bad at marching. And I'm, I support the marching band doing it, so my vote will be yes.
Yeah, I don't disagree with Anna, but I still agree with parental choice and talking to their kids and giving them the option. So I'll be, I'll be voting yes as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I asked for this to be postponed a month, just we had all the information. I, I agree with every, what everybody's saying, and I think there is a lot of benefit to, to PE, but also our state has decided to let this, make this waiver an option, so, um, yeah. Well, we put it on here and let the vote say what it does, but I appreciate the waiting a month so we all had the information, and, and I feel more comfortable with this vote today.
Appreciate you making that suggestion, so we all have time to digest it, when we have good information that we all, like, we're seeing, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Amy.
Hendricks?
No.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn at six fifty-eight?
I make a motion to-
Adjourn at six fifty-eight PM.
Motion by Anna, support by Tanya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. The motion passed. We are adjourned.